Alright, before we get started, I did just want to give all of them a round of applause. They did a great job. As I tell my students, public speaking may or may not be something that you enjoy, but unfortunately, it's often a part of life for everyone, and so it's something that is important to practice. And it always surprises me, because oftentimes, it is some of those quieter kids that shine in the public speaking, and they really do a great job with their speeches. And so, be aware, some of these kids might be kind of quiet, they might be a little shy. We need to make sure we're being the best audience we can for them. And so, I did give a program, it's not in order, because we did choose the order this morning, and so I just have it in fifth and sixth grade. But the order today of the speeches, we are gonna start with Sarah Sanders, then Coulter, Nora, Melia, Isaac, Evan, Lexi, sorry, I just like kept the numbers written, Brody, Lucas, Eliana, Millie, and Lily. And fourth graders, we all, I am always excited to invite you, because some of you, like I can see the panic in your face right now, and you're like, "Do I really have to do this?" And next year, that's always like one of the first things that my fifth graders ask me. They're like, "So that speech thing, were you serious when you said we had to do it?" And the answer is, "Yes, I was serious, and it is something that everybody does." And I think it's so important, because it really is an example of the reality that you can do hard things. It's a hard thing, even for those people that like to speak in public, memorizing and getting up there and presenting, it's hard. And for those of you that are a little, little shyer, it can be really scary, but it is something that you can all do, and that feeling of accomplishment, when you do it, is pretty incredible. So, I'm excited to have you guys participate in this next year, and just kind of enjoy this experience now. So, we'll go ahead and start, and we can applaud, we can, you can laugh, you can applaud, but you do wanna remember that they don't have a microphone, and so you need to be a pretty quiet audience, so we can make sure that we can appreciate all their hard work.
Hello, my name is Sarah Sanders, and I'm gonna be doing The Book With No Pictures by B.J. Novak. This is a book with no pictures. It might seem like no fun, for someone to read you a book with no pictures. It probably seems boring and serious, except here's how books work. Every word the book says, the person reading the book has to say, "No matter what." That's the deal, that's the rule. So that means, even if the words say, "Blork," wait, what? That doesn't even mean anything. Blurf, wait a second, this isn't the kind of book I wanted to read, and I have to read every word the book says? Uh-oh. I am a monkey who taught myself to read. Hey, I am not a monkey. Now I am reading you this book with my monkey mouth and my monkey voice. That is not true, I am not a monkey. Yes, I am a monkey, and also, I am a robot monkey. What? And my head is made out of blueberry pizza. Wait a second, is this whole book a trick? Can I stop reading, please? No. Now it's time for me to sing you my favorite song. A song? Do I really have to sing a glug, glug, glug? My face is a bug. I eat ants for breakfast right off the road. What? This is ridiculous, can I please stop reading yet? No. There are more pages, I have to read the rest? My only friend in the whole wide world is a hippo named Boo Boo Bop. Boo Boo Bop. And the kid I read this book to is the best kid ever in the history of the entire world. Oh, really? And this kid is the smartest kid too, because this kid chose this book even though it had no pictures. Because kids know, this is a book that makes grownups have to say silly things, and make silly sounds, like, "Oh no, oh no, oh no, here it comes." Glurglewakko, magroffadoo. Eeeey! Flaggy flaggy, glibbity globbity globbity globbity. Badongyface. Oh, my goodness, please don't ever make me read this book again, it's so silly. In fact, it is completely and utterly preposterous. Next time, please, 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 please choose a book with pictures, because this is just too ridiculous to read. The end. Bonk. I didn't want to say that.
Hello, my name is Coulter Raquel Stare, and my speech is called Arts by Ted Orson. I just don't know what's going on, or why it has to be, but every day, it's something worse. What's happening to me? I think it was three days ago, I first became aware that in my cupboard caught a couple pieces of my hair. I stared at them amazed, and more than just a bit appalled, to think that I was only five and starting to go bald. Then later on, I don't recall exactly when it was, I lifted up my shirt and found this little piece of fuzz. I stared at it amazed and wondered, "What's it all about?" But then I understood, it was my stuffing coming out. Next day, when I was outside playing with the water hose, I saw that little bits of skin were peeling from my toes. I stared at them amazed, and then I gave a little groan, to think that pretty soon, I might be peeled down to the bone. Then yesterday, before my bath, as I took off my clothes, a chunk of something gray and wet fell right out of my nose. I stared at it amazed and thought, "I should be feeling pain, wouldn't you if you just lost a little piece of brain?" So now today, I'm sitting here enjoying Dr. Seuss, and suddenly, I realize a tooth is coming loose. I wiggle it amazed, dismayed, too horrified to speak, without my teeth, how can I eat? I already feel weak. Now I'm really worried, kind of scared as can be, 'cause finally, what's happening is very clear to see. The glue that holds our parts together isn't holding me. And now I'm thinking to myself, what's next in mind to go? Might be my ears, might be my eyeballs? How's a kid to know? One day, I might be off like a bull and have my arm fall off. Or maybe, I could lose my head if I suddenly cough. Quite soon, I'll be in pieces, a pile without a shape. Good thing Dad keeps lots and lots and lots of masking tape. What? You forgot to tell me that my teeth fall out? And when they do, some brand-new teeth will soon begin to sprout? My hair, my skin, and everything? There's nothing I should fear? So all of this is normal? Phew, that's really good to hear. Then tell me, what's this yellow stuff I got out of my ear?
Hi, my name is Nora Witten, and I'm presenting The Three Little Pigs by Roald Dahl. The animal I really dig above all others is the pig. Pigs are noble, pigs are clever, pigs are courteous. However, now and then, to break this rule, one needs a pig who is a fool. What, for example, would you say, if strolling through the woods one day, right there in front of you, you saw a house that had been made of straw? The wolf who saw it licked his lips and said, "That pig has had his tips." "Little pig, little pig, let me come in. Now, now, by the hairs on my chinny chin chin. Then I'll huff, and I'll puff, and I'll blow your house in." The little pig began to pray, but Wolf, he blew his house away. He shouted, "Bacon, pork, and ham, oh what a lucky wolf I am." And though he ate the pig quite fast, he carefully kept the tail till last. Wolf wandered on, a trifle bloated, surprise, surprise, per se, he noted. Another little house for pigs, and this one had been built of twigs. "Little pig, little pig, let me come in. Now, now, by the hairs on my chinny chin chin. Then I'll huff, and I'll puff, and I'll blow your house in." The wolf said, "Okay, here we go." He then began to blow and blow. The little pig began to squeal, he cried, "Oh Wolf, you've had one meal, why can't we talk and make a deal?" The wolf replied, "Not on your nelly," and soon the pig was in his belly. "Two juicy little pigs," Wolf cried, "but still, I'm not quite satisfied. I know how full my tummy's bulging, but oh, how I adore indulging." So creeping quietly as a mouse, the wolf approached another house, a house which also had its side, a little piggy trying to hide. "You'll not get me," the piggy cried. "I'll blow you down," the wolf replied. "You'll need," Pig said, "a lot of puff, and I don't think you've got enough." Wolf huffed and puffed and blew and blew, the house stayed up as good as new. "If I can't blow it down," Wolf said, "I'll have to blow it up instead. Come back in the dead of night and blow it up with dynamite." Pig cried, "You brute, I might have known." Then, picking up the telephone, he dabbled quickly as he could, the number of Red Riding Hood. "Hello," she said, "who's speaking, who? Oh hello, Piggy, how do you do?" Pig cried, "I need your help, Miss Hood, oh, help me, please, do you think you could?" "I'll try, of course," Miss Hood replied. "What's on your mind, oh Wolf," Pig cried, "I know you've dealt with wolves before, and now I've got one at my door." "My darling Pig," she said, "my sweet, that's something really up my street. I've just begun to wash my hair, but when it's dry, I'll be right there." A short while later, through the wood, came striding brave Miss Riding Hood. The wolf stood there, his eyes ablaze and yellowish like mayonnaise. His teeth were sharp, his gums were raw, and spit was dripping from his jaw. Once more, the maiden's eyelid flickers, she draws the pistol from her knickers. Once more, she hits the vital spot and kills him with a single shot. Pig, peeking through the window, stood and yelled, "Well done, Miss Riding Hood." Ah, Piglet, you must never trust young ladies from the upper crust. For now, Miss Riding Hood, one notes, not only has two wolf skin coats, but when she goes from place to place, she has a pigskin travel in case.
My name is Amelia Arbuckle, and my speech is called Henry and the Yeti. Henry loves Yetis. Yes, yes, yeah, nobody knows a Yeti's actually. "Yetis," says Henry's father. Hmm, nobody actually knows. But Henry is sure Yetis do exist, so he'll go on expedition to find them. Henry asks his principal if he can go on expedition. "Yetis," says the principal, "they don't exist." This is a small announcement, Henry is going on an expedition to find a Yeti. Everybody laughs. Henry packs all the equipment he needs for the expedition. A waterproof hammock, a compass, a telescope, a climbing open, and a camera to take pictures for evidence. Now Henry is ready. Remember, no staying off late, says Henry's father. Henry is surprised, it's not that difficult finding the way to the mountains. But it is a long way, across an ocean, up the hill, over a river, river, and through a dense forest, until the mountains. Henry climbs one mountain after another, searching everywhere for evidence. But Henry finds nothing, there's no sign of the Yeti anywhere, not even a suspicious footprint. Henry was sure Yetis do exist, but now he isn't so sure. Maybe he should just turn around and go right back. Oh, Henry sees a Yeti. The Yeti sees Henry, the Yeti slightly bigger than Henry expects, and friendlier. Henry takes pictures of the Yeti for evidence, then they play hide and seek. Now it is time for Henry to go home. Henry is surprised it's more difficult knowing the way back, so he uses a compass to help find the way home. "Well," says Henry's father. "I didn't stay up late once," says Henry. "No," says Henry's father, "did you see a Yeti?" "Oh, yes, Yetis do exist," and brought back the evidence. Henry unpacks his equipment. A waterproof hammock, a compass, a telescope, a climbing open. "Wait a second, no camera." "No camera," says Henry. "No camera, no evidence," says Henry's father. "No evidence," says Henry. "No evidence," says Henry's principal. Write ten million lines for making things up. Everybody laughs. What can Henry do now? He did see a Yeti, Yetis do exist, but nobody but his own father believes them. Oh, Henry sees the Yeti again. The Yeti sees Henry. The principal sees the Yeti, and everybody stops laughing. The Yeti gives Henry back his camera. Now the principal is lying down. Henry loves Yetis. Yes, yes.
Hello, I'm Joseph White, and today I'll be doing the Smithsonian Barbie Letter by Harvey Rowe. Pale newithropology conditions, Smithsonian Institute, 207 Pennsylvania Avenue, Washington DC, 2007-8. Dear sir, thank you for your latest submission to the institute, labeled 2-on-1D, Layer 7, Mexican Post, Hominid Skull. We have given this specimen a careful and detailed examination, and regret to inform you that we disagree with your theory that it represents conclusive proof of the presence of early man in Charleston County 2 million years ago. Rather, it appears that what you have found is the head of a barbitol of a variety one of our staff rooms, and this old children believes to be the malvea. It is evident that you've given a great deal of thought to the analysis of this specimen, and you may be quite certain that those of us who are familiar with your prior work field were loath from the construction of the findings. However, we do feel that there are a number of physical attributes of this specimen which may have taken off to its modern origin. One, the material is molded plastic, ancient hominid remains are typically fossilized bone. Two, the cranial capacity of the specimen is approximately 9 cubic centimeters, well below the threshold of even the earliest identified proto-hominids. Three, the dentition pattern evident on the skull is more consistent with the common domesticated dog than it is with the ravenous man-eating plesian clams you speculate roamed the wetlands during that time. This latter finding is certainly one of the most intriguing hypotheses you have submitted in your history of this institution, but the evidence seems to weigh rather heavily against it. Without going into too much detail, let us say that A, this specimen looks like the head of a barbitol that dogs chew on, B, clams don't have teeth. It is with feelings tarnished with melancholy that we must deny your request to have this specimen carbon-dated. This is partially due to the heavy load our lab must bear in its normal architecture, and partly due to carbon-dating's extant accuracy and fossils of recent geological record. To best of our knowledge, no barbitals were produced prior to 1956 AD, and carbon-dating is likely to produce wildly inaccurate results. Sadly, we must also deny your request to approach the National Science Foundation's Philogene Department with the concept of assigning your specimen the scientific name Australopithecus spiferrina. Speaking personally, I, for one, fought tenaciously for the acceptance of your proposed taxonomy, but it was ultimately voted down because the species name you selected was hyphenated and deliberately found in the Latin. However, we gladly accept your generous donation of this fascinating specimen to the museum. By all whose undoubtedly not a hominid fossil, it is nonetheless yet another riveting example of the great body of works you seem to accumulate here so effortlessly. You should note that our director has reserved a special shelf in his own office for display of the specimens you've previously submitted to the institution, and the entire staff speculates daily of what will happen upon next, when you dig, when you dig, at the site you've discovered in your backyard. We eagerly anticipate your trip to our nation's capital that you proposed in your last letter, and several of us are pressing for the director to pay for it. You are particularly interested in hearing you expand on your theories surrounding the transpositing foliation of ferrous ions in the structural matrix that makes the excellent juvenile tyrannosaurus rex femur you recently discovered take on the deceptive appearance of a rusty 9mm Sears Craftsman automotive rustle wrench. Yours in science, Harvey Rowe, curator, Antiquities.
I am Anthony Cunningham, and I am doing Llama Destroys the World by Jonathan Steffsley. On Friday, llama will destroy the world. "I am llama," proclaimed llama. Monday, on Monday, llama found cake, piles of cake, more cake than any llama should ever eat. "Dad," said llama. Llama ate all of the cake. This was his first mistake, it was an honest mistake, it was a delicious mistake. One of those mistakes that turns into more mistakes, and eventually, the ultimate doom of everything. Tuesday, Tuesdays were for dancing, so llama put on his dancing pants. The pants did not fit, he was still full of cake. But llama never danced without his dancing pants, they made his butt look groovy. So llama huffed and puffed and squeezed and sucked himself into the pants. This was his second mistake. And then llama danced, he jigged, he tegan, he cha-cha'd real smooth. His rhythm was perfect, his moves were precise, but the pants never stood a chance. The rick was thunderous, it shook the house, the trees, and the mountains. It shook the fabric of the universe. The cosmic vibrations from the ripping pants were so mighty that a black hole tore open. Wednesday, on Wednesday, llama found a black hole. "Dad," said llama. Llama had never seen a black hole before, he didn't know what it was, or what it could do. But llama was a llama of science, he knew the answers were out there, just waiting to be discovered. And so llama read books, he ran complex experiments, he debated with the greatest minds and figures he could find, until he analyzed the data and came to a well-thought-out conclusion. "Dad," said llama wisely. Instead of warning the world of its imminent doom, llama decided to do something more important. He made a bologna and cheese sandwich, with extra cheese. This was his third mistake. Thursday, on Thursday, many signs of doom appeared in the sky, flying top hats, soaring teacups, twisting, tumbling, well-dressed turtles. But llama didn't notice, because Thursdays were for painting, and llama was busy creating his next masterpiece. The end was near. Friday, on Friday, the world ended. The more the black hole sucked in, the bigger and straw grit grew. The animals flew, the pizzas and bicycles and houseplants flew, and llama flew too. "I am llama." The black hole swallowed everything up, every single thing left in the world, everything left in the universe, until there was nothing. I am llama. Saturday, Saturday, on the other side of the black hole, everything was fine. The world had tumbled out exactly as it had been before, even llama. "I am llama," proclaimed llama. The sky was blue, the sun was shining, and the world was perfectly calm, like nothing had happened. Sunday, Sunday, with the world back to normal, llama found something wonderful. Piles of pie, more pie than any llama should ever eat. "Dad," said llama. Llama ate all of the pie. The end.
On a cold afternoon in a cold little town, where everywhere you looked, within the white of snow, there's a black of soup from chimney. Annabelle found a box filled with yarn of every color, so she went home and knit herself a sweater. And when Annabelle was done, she had some extra yarn. So she knit a sweater for Mars too, but there was still extra yarn. So when Annabelle and Mars went for a walk, Nate pointed and laughed and said, "You two look ridiculous." "You're just jealous," said Annabelle. "No, I'm not," said Nate, but it turns out he was. And even after she made sweaters for Nate and his dog, and for herself and Mars, there was still extra yarn. At school, animals classmates could not stop talking about her sweater. "Quiet," shouted Mr. Norman, "quiet, everyone." "Annabelle, that sweater of yours is a terrible distraction, and I cannot teach with everyone turning around to look at you." Then on that one for everyone, Annabelle said, "So they won't have to turn around." "Impossible," said Mr. Norman, "you can't." But it turns out she could, and she did, even for Mr. Norman. And when she was done, Annabelle still had extra yarn. So she knit sweaters for her mom and dad, and for Mr. Papleton, and Mrs. Palonton, and Dr. Klammer, and for little Louis. She made sweaters for everyone except Mr. Crabtree, who never wore sweaters or even long pants, who'd stand in his shorts with snow up to his knees. "No sweater for me, thanks," said Mr. Crabtree. So she made Mr. Crabtree a hat, and even then, Annabelle still had extra yarn. She made sweaters for all the dogs, and all the cats, and for other animals too. Soon, people thought, "Soon, Annabelle will run up here." But it turns out she didn't. So Annabelle made sweaters for things that didn't even wear sweaters. Things began to change in that little town. News spread of this remarkable boy, who never ran out of yarn, and people came to visit from around the world, to see all the sweaters and to shake Annabelle's hand. One day, an archduke who's very fond of clothes sailed across the sea and demanded to see Annabelle. "Little girl," said the archduke, "I would like to buy that miraculous box of yarn. I'm willing to offer you one million dollars." "No, thank you," said Annabelle, who's knitting a sweater for a pickup truck. The archduke's mustache twitched. "Two million," he said. Annabelle said, "No, thanks." "Ten million," shouted the archduke, "take it or leave it." "Leave it," said Annabelle, "I won't sell the yarn." And she did it. So that night, the archduke hired three robbers to break into Annabelle's house, and they stole the box and took it to the archduke, who set off across the snow and sailed over the sea, back to his castle. The archduke put on his favorite song and sat in his best chair. Then he took out the box, and he lifted its lid. The archduke's mustache quivered, it shivered, it trembled, the archduke hurled the box out the window and shouted, "Little girl, I curse you with my family's curse, you will never be happy again." But it turns out she was. The end.
Hello, my name is Brody Trujillo, and today I'll be presenting my speech titled My Pet Book by Bob Stack. Most pets you know are cats and dogs, go out and take over. But there's this one boy in Smarty Town who spends a little book. He never cared for puppy dogs, and kids made up sneaky. He pleaded to his mom and dad, "I want a pet, that's easy. A book would make a perfect pet, he heard his mother say. His dad had read that no pet book has ever run away. So they strolled right past the pet store to a shop for bookstore sale, the one with whiskers, fur, fleas, or a waggy little tail. How could he just choose one, too tough for this book lover? Then one caught his eye, a frisky red heart cover. Out of all the books in the store, he liked this one a lot. The page is crisp, the printing font is fine, so very tough. He didn't even give it a name like Bercher's Book. It wouldn't answer anyway, so the book was bought. It never read it, never drank it, couldn't do a trick. It had no fur, it had no reason, but it bet just did. It never needed bathing, its ears were never true, and best of all, that little- And best of all, that little pet, it didn't even poop. No better pet requires an evening stroll, not like the ill-bred dogs that drink from toilet bowls. Or the cat that always sleeps or won't turn off its purr. A pet book never makes a sound or doesn't lick its fur. And the book was many tales of awesomeness and glory. He imagined as he read that he was in the story. He would leave his book home and off he'd go to school. One day he returned and his pet book was gone. "Oh no, he ran away, he ran away." The boy began to plead, "How could he run away without a pair of feet?" The maid could hear the crying boy, that sound was such a rare thing. The maid said, "I think I owe you, I gave your book to charity." While cleaning out the house of junk, the maid grabbed the box. She filled it up with household things like cups and plates and socks. The book had simply been swept up along the floor. She couldn't, um... She took the box and off straight to the altar store. So they raced out home, they raced downtown to hope and find it on a shelf waiting near a dusty Christmas elf. It wasn't hanging with the coasters sitting with the chairs, it wasn't with the lanterns snoozing with stuffed bears. Of course, they checked the books, the new ones and the old. They couldn't find it anywhere, they thought it was just sold. So they slumped on a musty couch in unison, they cried. Then the maid leaned in and asked, "Where would a pet book hide?" The boy had never thought of that, he broke into a smile. Then he remembered something he had seen in the dog and cat's file. "If I was a pet book, I would likely hide in here. The darkness, I could hide in here and the darkness could just help me disappear." So he stuck his hand in and felt around each other, then he pulled his hand out to find his lost pet book. They went home, the three of them. The pet book was checked for wear. The boy was happy to see not one torn page in there. A crazy day they had indeed, but the story ended well. The mom asked the boy, "How could a book bring such joy? "'Cause every book's a friend," said the young one, was a boy. His eyes were sleepy from the search and the time it took, but now he could go to, he could dream all night with his lost and found pet book.
I used to love it with them. I'm Wiggus Berg and I'm doing The Little Lady Who's Not Afraid of Anything. Once upon a time, there's a little lady who's not afraid of anything. One windy afternoon, she left her cottage and went for a walk to look herbs, spices, nuts and seeds. She walked so long and so far that it started to get dark. You could only see a shining silver moon shining through the night. Suddenly, she stopped, right in the middle of the path with two big shoes, and the shoes went clomp, clomp. "Get out my way, you two big shoes, I'm not afraid of you," said the little lady. And on she walked, but behind her she could hear, two shoes go clomp, clomp. A little ways on, she stumbled into a pair of pants and the pants went wiggle, wiggle. "I'm not afraid of you," said the little lady. And went on, but behind her she could hear, two shoes go clomp, clomp, one pair of pants go wiggle, wiggle. Suddenly, she bumped into a shirt, and the shirt went shake, shake. "I'm not afraid of you," said the little lady. And on she walked just a little bit faster, but behind her she could hear, two shoes go clomp, clomp, one pair of pants go wiggle, wiggle, one shirt go shake, shake. A little ways on, she bumped into... A little ways on, she bumped into two white gloves and a tall black hat. "I'm not afraid of you," said the little lady. On she walked just a little bit faster, but behind her she could hear, two shoes go clomp, clomp, one pair of pants go wiggle, wiggle, one shirt go shake, shake. Two gloves go clap, clap, one hat go na, na. She started to walk a little bit faster, but behind her... She got startled by a very huge, very orange, very scary pumpkin head, and the pumpkin head went boom, boom. She didn't stop to talk. She ran until she was safe inside the cottage and locked the door. It was so peaceful and quiet and tall, the knock, knock on the door. She went to her door and opened it. Who do you think she saw? Two shoes go clomp, clomp, one pair of pants go wiggle, wiggle, one shirt go shake, shake, two gloves go clap, clap, one black hat go na, na, and one scary pumpkin head go boom, boom. "I'm not afraid of you," said the little lady, "no one's to be called" buzzed the pumpkin head, started to get look sad. "I have ideas," said the little lady, and whispered to the pumpkin. The pumpkin's face took a hint to brighten. And they left the door, and the little lady whistled her way to bed. She walked out of bed and looked out a window, what do you think she saw? Two shoes go clomp, clomp, one pair of pants go wiggle, wiggle, one shirt go shake, shake, two gloves go clap, clap, one black hat go na, na, and one scary pumpkin head go boom, boom, to scare all the friends away.
My name is Eliana Hunt and today I will be deciding Silver's first nominee at Rio Summit nineteen ninety-two. I'm here to speak for all generations. I'm here to speak, speak on behalf of the starving children around the world whose cries don't hurt. I'm here to speak for the countless animals dying across the planet because they have nowhere left to go. I am afraid to go in the sun now because of the holes in our ozone. I am afraid to freeze the air because I don't know what chemicals are in it. Did you have to worry about these things when you were my age? All this is happening before our eyes and yet we act as if we have all the time we want and all the solutions. I'm only a child and I don't have all the solutions. I don't, I want you to realize and neither do you. You don't know how to fix the holes in our ozone layers. You don't know how to bring the salmon back up in a dead stream. You don't know how to fix, how to bring back an in-hole nasty. And you can't bring back the force that once grew where there's none another. If you don't know how to fix it, please, stop breaking it. Here you may be delegates of your government, business people, organizers, reporters or politicians. But really, you are mothers and fathers, sisters and brothers, aunts and uncles and all of you are someone's child. I'm only a child, yet I know that we are all part of the families. Five billion strong, in fact thirty million species strong. And borders and governments will never change that. I'm only a child, yet I know that we are all in this together and should act as one single world towards one single goal. In my anger, I'm not blind. In my fear, I'm not afraid of telling the world how I feel. In my country, we make so much waste. We buy and throw away, buy and throw away, buy and throw away. And yet the northern countries want share with the needy. Even when we have more than enough, we are afraid to share. We are afraid to let go of some of our own. Two days ago, here in Brazil, we were shopping, spending time with some children living on the street. This is what one child said. "I wish I were rich and if I were, I would give all the street children food, clothes, medicines, shelter and love and affection." If the child on the streets who has nothing is willing to share, why are we who have everything still so greedy? I can't stop thinking that these are children my own age, that it makes a tremendous difference where you are born. That I could be one of those children living in the favelas of Rio. I could be a child starving in Somalia or a victim of war in the Middle East or a veteran in India. I'm only a child, yet I know that if all the money spent on war is spent on finding environmental answers and deep poverty and finding trees, what a wonderful place this earth would be. At school, even in kindergarten, you teach us how to behave in the world. You teach us to not fight with others, to work things out, to respect others, to clean up your mess. To not hurt other creatures, to share, not be greedy. Then why do you go and do, do all the things you tell us not to do? Do not forget why you are attending these conferences, who you're doing this for. We are your own children, you are deciding what kind of world we're living in. My dad always says, "You are what you do, not what you say." Well, what you do makes me cry at night. You grown-ups say you love us, but I challenge you, please, make your actions reflect your word. Thank you.
I'm Millie James and I'm doing Wemberly Worried by Kevin Hinkins. Wemberly worried about everything. Big things, little things and everything in between. Wemberly worried in the morning, she worried at night and she worried all day long. "Don't worry," said her mother. "When you worry, I worry," said her father. "Worry, worry, worry," said her grandmother. "Too much worry." At home, Wemberly worried about the tree in the front yard and the crack in the living room wall and the noise of the radiator's name. At the playground, Wemberly worried about the chains on the swings, the bolts on the slides and the bars on the jungle gym. "You worry too much," said her mother. "Don't worry," said her father. But Wemberly worried, she worried and worried and worried. On her birthday, Wemberly worried that no one would come to her party. "See," said her father, "there was nothing to worry about." But then Wemberly worried that there wouldn't be enough cake. On Halloween, Wemberly worried that there would be too many butterflies in the neighborhood parade. "But see," said her mother, "there was nothing to worry about." But then Wemberly worried because she was the only one. "Don't worry," said her mother. "When you worry, I worry," said her father. "Worry, worry, worry," said her grandmother. "Too much worry." But soon, Wemberly had a new worry, school. Wemberly worried about school more than she had ever worried about anything ever before. By the time the first day arrived, Wemberly had a long list of worries. What if no one else has fought, what if no one else wears stripes, what if no one else brings it all, what if the teachers mean, what if the room smells bad, what if they refer my name, what if I can't find the bathroom, what if I ate a snack, what if I have to cry? "Don't worry," said her mother. "Don't worry," said her father. But Wemberly worried, she worried and worried and worried, she worried all the way there. Well, Wemberly's parents talked to the teacher, Mrs. Peachum. Wemberly looked around the room. "I think there's someone you should meet," said Mrs. Peachum. Her name was Jewel. She was standing by herself, wearing stripes and holding a doll. At first, Wemberly and Jewel just glanced at each other. "This is Petal," said Wemberly. "This is Niblet," said Jewel. Petal waved, Niblet waved. "Hi," said Petal. "Hi," said Niblet. Throughout the morning, Wemberly and Jewel sat side by side and played together whenever they could. Petal and Niblet sat side by side too. Wemberly worried, but no more than usual and sometimes even less. Before Wemberly knew it, it was time to go home. "Come back tomorrow," called Mrs. Peachum as the students walked out the door. Wemberly turned and smiled and waved. "I will, don't worry."
Um, I'm Lilian Brown and my speech is called Giraffe Can't Dance. Gerald was a tall giraffe, his neck was long and slick, but his knees were awfully crooked and his legs were rather thin. So he was great at standing still and munching shoots off trees, but when he tried to run around, he buckled at the knees. So now every year in Africa, they held a jungle dance where every single animal comes to skip and prance. But this year, when the day arrived, poor Gerald felt so sad, because when it came to dancing, it was really very bad. Well, um, so the warthogs started waltzing and the rhinos rocked and rolled. The lions danced a tango that was elegant and bold. The chimp soul did a cha-cha that had a very Latin feel. And eight baboons all teamed up to do a splendid Scottish reel. Gerald swallowed brimbley and he started towards the floor, but the lions aren't coming and then they began to roar. "Hey, look at clumsy Gerald," the animal was all sneered. Giraffe can't dance, he's still a fool, Gerald is so weird. Gerald simply froze up, he was rooted to the spot, the rape, thought and ruthless, oh, I feel like squat. So he, and so Gerald crept off the floor and started walking home. He'd never felt so sad before, so sad and so alone. Then he found a little clearing and looked up at the sky. The moon can be so beautiful, he was close to the sky and... "Excuse me," coughed a cricket who had seen him earlier on, "but sometimes when you're different, you just need a different song." The, listen to the swaying grass, listen to the trees, to me, this sweet music is the branches and the breeze. So imagine that that lovely moon is playing just for you, because anything makes music if you really wanted to. And with that, the cricket smiled and picked up his violin. And then Gerald pulled his body, he lost his amazing thing, his hooves had started shuffling, making furgle on the ground, his neck was gently slaying and his tail was switching around. He threw his legs out sideways and swung them everywhere, and then he did a backward somersault and leapt up in the air. Gerald looked so wonderful, his mouth was open wide. "I'm dancing, yes, I'm dancing, I am dancing," Gerald cried. One by one, each animal who'd been there at the dance arrived while Gerald hooked it on and watched him quite enchant. They shouted, "It's a miracle, we must be in a dream, Gerald's the best dancer that we've ever, ever seen." "Tell us how you learned to dance like that, Gerald, please tell us how." But the Gerald simply twirled around and finished with a bow. Then he looked up at the moon and stars above, "We can all dance," he said, and saw a new day coming.
I also want to thank our judges, I always appreciate their willingness to help out. We have Mrs. Byers and Mrs. Shatley. And right now, we're going to give them a few minutes to confer and pick of our district and they have a district showcase. Um, after heated discussions, um, they were able to pick our three winners. They had a hard time because you all did an incredible job. And before I say the winners, I do also want to say, uh, the thing, I noticed this when we did spelling bee, uh, but the thing that makes me so happy as a teacher and as a person is when I see like the good sportsmanship that you guys have, when anyone comes and sits down and you guys are like, "You did so good." And you're so proud of each other, that is like the best thing and I think that is incredible and I just love seeing it. So I just want to say, first of all, you guys are great scorers. And we have our winners. Uh, so our winners are Evan, Eliana, and Sarah Seagull. Uh, they all did such a great job. Uh, and yeah. Uh, I will give each of you guys the information about the district showcase. Uh, and I did want to say, parents, uh, Mr. Straddling here has filmed it and he is going to be sending me the link and I will send that out to you. Uh, it's a private link, so I send that out to you because he has filmed all of the students. So, thank you to him. And finally, I want to say, you guys were an incredible group. And finally, I wanna say, you guys were an incredible audience. That was an hour that you sat here and I listened, and it was so fun.